8:06, 26, I'll call the selectmen meeting to order a site visit at Flat Hill Road in Cortland Circle right now to talk about drainage in the area. We have all the selectmen here and members of the community and members of some of the other boards run by Mr. Marquetti. I'm assuming that you're going to be talking to us a little bit about what you've done already.
Yep.
And then we'll go to the neighbors and we'll leave it as an open, open site meeting for people to explain, you know, their situations and the situations with the water here. So I'll just turn it over here.
Okay. So I was approached a year or so ago to start reviewing a drainage issue that's been happening on Flat Hill. We met with the DPW director at the time, so it was Jack Rodicklin. Drove the road. It was, there was no runoff issues at the time. I think it was, it wasn't summer, it was probably spring, but there was no rainfall. He explained what had been happening. And we just talked about conceptually where the water might be coming from, what are some possible solutions? Then when he left, Rob Oliver took over and he authorized a survey of Flat Hill. We basically said, I can't really do anything design-wise until we have some actual hard survey. So the right-of-way from, from the top of the hill here, just beyond this Cortland intersection, the road was surveyed all the way down to Arbor Street and then Arbor, oh, sorry, Page, and then down to Beaver Brook. So we got an actual surveyed picture of the topography of the roadway, of the available area within the town right-of-way where we could potentially install some stormwater best management practices to try to control, infiltrate, mitigate whatever the increase in runoff was, or that's been happening since this was constructed. What we found, we did a bunch of test pits back in the fall of 2021. Groundwater is extremely high, which basically eliminated the ability of us to put any stormwater BMPs on the shoulders of the road that would actually do anything. There may be a little bit of mitigation impact that would help you, but very minimal. So the effort and cost to put these things in would far outweigh the benefits of what it would gain us. So kind of that brings us here now to talk with you guys to really see it before I can really dig in to the actual design plans. We were never asked to go further, deeper into it to see the design plan, see what was designed and how it was modeled back in the 90s. So I think we're kind of at that point now. We talked about in the selectman meeting last week, the, probably the best approach here is to look at the source of the water, where it's coming from, and see what we can do here, or at least figure out what the cause is now before we get into the downstream effects and how we can mitigate it. So that's kind of lead us to today.
So I'd like to turn it over to residents in the area to at least, now that we're onsite, to give us some bearing about where, like when the problem is happening, like where is it coming from, where is it going to, what's, you know, give us some extent of, you know, it goes across the street or whatever, just so we and everybody who's going to be watching this later on can see firsthand or get a feel firsthand of what the problem is. So I know there's two people here.
All right, I'll go ahead. Matt Allison, 305 Flat Hill Road and 188 Flat Hill Road. I'm also a member of the planning board. However, I am an affected neighbor here. So in 94, the planning process began, they applied to the planning board in 96, I believe they were approved. The PRA, the, it was a PRA, it was a weird thing because it's a condo unit basically on a huge piece of land, so it's one piece of property. And they hogged out the road and put in the utilities. They brought water up from 2A along Flat Hill and it comes in here, both entrances. The flooding issues started, when they started with the road, they increased in 2000, I believe it was about, when we started having some issues. And then 2001, they built the first three homes and they had paved this road up to the corner, what's called Station 915, 915 feet in from Flat Hill Road. And that's when we started, and they had the basin constructed, and that's when we started seeing excessive flows onto the road. And from there, it only got worse.
The basin behind us?
The basin behind us, yes.
Basin A.
Basin A. So the planning board didn't sign off on the permit until 2007, early 2007?
April.
So between 2000 and 2007, there were numerous times that numerous residents got in touch with the town, got in touch with, first with the planning board, then with DPW, then we tried select board, we tried town manager, numerous attempts to get this addressed while it was still under the ownership of the developer, to no avail. They did a bunch of band-aids, they dug up the right-of-way, they backfilled it with riprap, which seemed to exacerbate the problem. They took an existing culvert under the road, they put a structure on the other side of it, they put a pipe halfway down my field, which outletted and then flooded the field and also then flooded the neighbor downhill. And basically a bunch of back and forth and lip service from the town and brought us here today, thankfully. So I appreciate any positive outcome from this meeting.
I just want to add, in 2006, the, an attempt to fix the problem, they increased the size of the basin. Did you mention that?
They increased it, they added a sediment four-bay because in some of their analysis, they redid this part, they made a high point so that it didn't flow into the road, they made a paved swale that ran into the basin directly. And when you've got a direct pavement runoff into a pond, you have to have a sediment four-bay, I believe. So that was the enlargement, was the addition of a four-bay?
And then in 2009, when the septic system went in at 268 Flat Hill, that seemed to create more flooding in, at 49 Cortland Circle. A trench was dug to divert the water and that all came out onto the road. But the water that goes through those lots comes from a higher elevation and we, I suspect is probably from the pond that's in the center of Cortland Circle. As I had mentioned at the last select board meeting, the original drainage design indicates that the subwatersheds that are supposed to drain westward towards Fulcom Swamp, except for number one and seven, which are along the road. And it doesn't appear that that's happening. There are culverts down at that cross Cortland Circle that seem to be ineffective as far as transporting the water in a westward direction.
Else, if there's anything they want to?
Yep. Hi, Eric Colts, I live here at 49 Cortland Circle. And as I talked to you guys on, was it Tuesday night?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we've lived here since 2005. And 2006, we actually had a little lake over here next to our house that actually came down towards these garden areas and never really made it to that arbor area, right? Just short of that, but it's safe, flooded about six to eight inches of water. And then from there, the next year, they actually put that, to the increase of size as far as this basin, and they also put in some landscaping drains that are right over here as far as on a lawn. When they put those in, I kind of mentioned to them, it's really in the wrong location. You really need to go ahead and focus one of the drains up here further, go ahead and drain all this water off the land. And because it's a condominium association or it was a contract, well, excuse me, a management company actually did all the work as far as putting those in.
Who, who asked for the work and who did the work?
I'm not really sure. You can check with the homeowners association.
No, but I mean, it was through the homeowners, it wasn't the town?
No, it was not the town.
Okay.
Again, this is all private property.
Yep.
And then when they actually turned around and put in the Title V compliant septic system next door, that's when we noticed as far as, we only got about 20% of that water that was coming over this way. Heavy, heavy rains right there might end up with 18 square foot area, it's over towards the trees over there. And that's about as much, much water as we actually get. We've always checked as far as water inside of a basement, we have never had water inside of our basement. But, you know, if you take a look at these landscaping drains, you'll notice it drains into the, the stormwater system and then flows stormwater system into this retention basin.
So I think a couple of the objectives today, Mr. Chair, were to kind of get a look, because there was a mention that this doesn't fill all the way up and that it may not be working as intended. And so I think that was the intent that Mr. Allison and Brian would take a look at this, that we'd also would walk back to see this pond that's back there, to kind of get some feel for where the water is flowing versus where it was supposed to be flowing. I think we were trying to visualize what's going on today. So I, I think we all kind of, I think the intent again is for this to kind of be a walk-around.
I understand that. I just want to start by saying, because I've been here, you know, once or twice when this has happened, but I want to know for everybody, I mean, so where does the water come from? Where is it flowing to? And where, whose property is exactly is it affecting?
Where's the 268? My husband and I. So we live here, but the water comes from behind, like the septic system that has been mentioned, we own the septic, but the water actually comes from behind it.
And it's actively running right now?
And it's actively running now, so you can see it comes around it, so.
Is it infiltrating your septic system?
No, we don't believe so. Our septic system never go, it's, it's never had any issues. It was put in before we bought the house, I think 2009 is what Eric said, 2010. And we have lots of water. I mean, our basement floods like the Allison's and so the water table is extremely high on our property.
And then Tom, one final if I may. Chris Monard, 672 Page Street. So one of the, my concerns when I heard about this project and knew a little bit of what was going on from talking to Rob Oliver is that the plan had been to bring the water down to the end of the road and then put it into the drainage system on the Flat Hill. Flat Hill drainage system ends at my house and John's house over here, my neighbor. And then it goes between our yards, kind of crisscrossing between, into a spring-fed pond with an outlet that goes across my neighbor's, our other neighbor's driveway and under it for a culvert. I sent you guys a video, I don't know if you saw it. Continues on ultimately to Beaver Brook, but then through another culvert that has a trail that goes across it. So I'm concerned about additional water in there. A, because I don't think that culvert through the driveway was designed to, to, to take on increased water flow. And B, again, we have really, really high water table now and, you know, just adding more water into that, you know, is not a good idea. And then one other, because he's not here, you know, across the road is, from us is another source of water. There's a, there's a pond that comes across, so there's actually two drainage onto my property into there. And a little bit up the road, a page towards this way, they also have massive water problems and there's a lot of drainage there. So the water comes at the top here and it starts flowing down here. You know, February after a storm that, you know, the water rises, it's literally like a, it looks like a river coming down. It eventually crosses the road, it goes back down and then ultimately all the way to Page Street and continues on. So if we can get it ultimately all the way to Beaver Brook, I think that's good. My other concern though is at one point there was talk about just taking the water here and put it in Matt's backyard into the woods, but that's already like flooded and causing all sorts of problems for, for people on the north side of Page Street and then ultimately us. So we've got to be cautious of the second order effects to any fixes that we put in place.
Does the current conditions affect you currently, your property? Or you think your problem you have aren't really localized to there and you're just worried about adding to that by this project?
Well, certainly adding it to, I, currently I think it does as well, because the water, you can see the water come around and then continue down Page Street as well as kind of getting into, you know, this area and then down through the houses and onto Page Street as well. So I think it certainly affects us already.
We're managed right now, Tom? Just, we're, we're, the water situation that comes down through our property, especially the groundwater with the high water table, we're managed right now with a sump pump. I kid you not when I tell you that our sump pump is running almost 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And even days that you would expect the pump not to be on, it's running. We, our sump pump people had to come back because I hear, like the noise bothers me, so they came back to try to lift the pump, even though it's lifted up off the bottom of the sump pump now, it's still running. And I've had conversations with Matt Marrow before because there was some work done down in Beaver Pond and a whole bunch of trees were removed. What went from what looked like a swamp now looks like a pond, like a decent looking pond. And I had some concerns on the way that, you know, those trees come out, the root systems come out and it just diverts every, the way water runs in general, you know, and it was, so the water that's coming down now, we've seen an increase since we've moved here in 2004. We're managed with what we have. I do not believe we would be managed with what we have if we were to increase that flow much more. The pond that is in, between our backyard and our neighbor's backyard, the water level's gotten higher. We're lower than they are. We're considerably lower than they are. So, you know, anytime you're increasing that and I, you know, so.
The water runs across Allison's South Field onto my property. It goes down the trail. It also crosses parallel to, in the back of my house, towards Page Street.
From where we are right now, where is your house, Susan?
I'm down, I'm down the hill. So I think some of that water from Page Street is coming, coming from my property, which comes from Flat Hill.
And then just for record, I think the water is supposed to go that way, over into, what's the swamp?
Fulcom Swamp.
Fulcom Swamp. That's how it was intended to go. I think there's some blockages in the system or something, but it's now coming this way, you know, so it's just, it's going the wrong way.
And then for the record, my name's John Landry, I'm at 668 Page Street. I have that pond, it's private property. I do not have water issues yet, but I'm concerned that the town is thinking about throwing all this down to that pond, right? And I have not been part of the conversations until lately, so even if that was considered a project at some point, one would think that the abutters of that property would have to be notified.
Oh, well, yeah, there'd be lots of notifications.
Sure, but even before that as a proposal.
Sure.
So if I'm going to do a tour, can I do my portion of it first? Because I'd like to get down to Franklin.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
We're in front of your house.
Come on, let's take a walk. Okay, these are, it comes out here and goes into the stormwater drain. And the water goes across the street. Actually, I had a whole bunch of poplar trees here because of the water problem right there and they flooded. And we have issues as far as falling, so we actually took all of the trees out.
What's this drain here for? They noticed it seems to not be flooded.
This is what they actually installed to manage the water on our property. And the problem is, if the water never made it here, it actually made it right over there, that's where it stopped. I can suggest it to them, put a drain in over there, but they didn't listen to me. It used to come right down through here, right? And then from there, come over to right here and then from there.
It came through this brush?
Yep, yep, through the brush. And then from there, turn around and create a little gap of pond right over through here. And I guess the hope was that water would make it out to the street and then the street as far as it crossed the way. But it was just designed incorrectly.
Now, is the high water table here because they, like some kind of slab or some kind of clay thing that doesn't drain? It is porcelain. Okay, for sure. You see all the, all the new septic in this whole area, all these systems.
We have a tremendous amount of ledge, a tremendous amount of ledge.
Each house here does not have its own independent septic system. We have a community septic system. And we pump ours down with the waste line. Okay? And again, now this area, it'll flood probably about 18 square feet or so running through here, just minus flooded.
Does it generally?
You said it generally comes down along this, this sort of, this is a natural drainage wave and it kind of hugs along the back of the existing houses?
Yep, comes right down through here. When they put the Title V compliant septic system in here, it changed the flow of the water, right? Instead of 100% of the water coming over this way, we're only in for about 20% of the water.
And this house isn't part of the?
Right here?
This house isn't part of the condominium?
No, this is, this is Chris's property.
Correct.
And that's your septic?
Yep.
And you have water in your basement?
Yeah. Like, we have two sump pumps, just in case one goes out, like, and we don't go anywhere in the spring.
Yeah.
And we have an alarm.
And it's been like that since?
Since we moved in.
Which was when?
In 2012.
And then welcome to use my emergency generator any time they want.
And previous owners, he's had to help them because it has flooded. So we have that history too, that the seller has completely flooded. In our case, it's only gone up to here before we were, the alarms rang out, but it would continue.
You're the edge of the condo association?
Yes, we are. Okay, thank you. As far as the circle going around this way, we're number 49 and this northern entrance of the house. All right.
You can see a nice monterey across the whole way of the street.
Yep. Now, this is the brick crack that the town actually put in here and it's never been effective at all as far as managing the water. It's filled with sand and you can see as far as when the water flows, if it can flow into the brick crack, it flows on the side of the road, okay? And like you said, as far as the crack. That's all I can do if you want to walk up to the road.
We're here, I'm here.
Yeah, if you want to walk, show where the water comes in.
While we're here, can I, can I take a moment to point out that this road was repaved in 2018? And there's about a 300-foot longitudinal crack?
Yeah, I just noticed it already, yeah, it's pretty clear.
Has it been mentioned? Yeah? Okay. So this water infiltrates under the road, freeze thaw, freeze thaw, break.
Even here, you can see, it looks like it's going back under the road to the end and then it comes back out.
Oh, it definitely does. It goes under the road.
Going back in the gravel subbase under the road and then it's coming back out.
Let me mention one more thing as far as down in winter, when you've got this water flowing through, you can see as far as that entryway going.
Oh, sure.
The entryway, the circle ice is right over.
There's also a store bus stop, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very, very dangerous. Has anybody here, lived here before the condo association was here? And was any of this here?
I'll show you on my iPad, got an aerial photo from the early mid 90s before this construction started. This was an open field that my family used to hay and it included 103.
No, I understand that, but did this problem exist?
No.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Over the creek.
No, it's behind our.
No, no, I know that, from here.
Not, no, you have a couple of ponds here. This is one issue that's adding to, it's adding to the other issues that are downhill. It's just collecting, it's starting, the starting runoff is here.
Do you get, do you get anything on the north side of your property?
Not too much.
So really it's concentrated on the south side of your property?
And downhill.
Down this, this little wooded drainage, natural drainage way or not natural because it's, all the water's focused down that.
No, it's natural because this is the low end. But if you look at the topography, the high end of Flat Hill is behind us.
It's not a steep grade, but it climbs quite a ways up the road.
Right, this is not the higher Flat Hill.
Yeah, my question was going to be, I just find it hard to believe that nothing is getting into that leach field. I just don't, I don't understand how you could have that much water and not have anything leached that way.
The raised system is probably.
Well, to a degree, sure.
But we don't have any issues.
Okay, well, I don't want you to have any issues, I'm, I'm just using it out loud.
The highest elevation in this area is the pond.
So we, so we own up until, it goes at a funky angle, so it's, we own behind that house to some degree. I don't know where the line is, but you can tell that there's still water. And then the water continues to the right. If you look, you can see over here that it's still standing water from all the rain. So it's wet back in there also, you can tell by what's growing. And then we're at, you see the fire gate, there's a fire gate there, that's dry. That gate is somewhat, can be wet. We do not use our tractor to cut our grass until June back here.
I was going to ask, how long does this last?
June. We have ducks and great blue herding back here. And it's been this way since, when we first moved in, it used to actually go, the wetness was further. And there was more like wild roses and things like that, how Lunenburg is. And we cleared, the fence line was already there, so we just cleaned out to the fence line. But, yeah, we have ducks, like I said, we had great blue herding last spring, picking frogs and toads. So, but isn't, it isn't, I don't think it's the main source, but it is a source that can compound everything else that happens downhill. But the, there's a back property, so, so over there past that gate, we only own about three feet back. They divided this property after they put the septic in. So there's a two-acre lot that's between us and the neighbors of the cul-de-sac here. So it looks like for us, everything just, everything's draining down this way.
It comes through?
It comes through.
Through the undeveloped lot?
It keeps on going.
Onto your lot?
Yeah. I mean, we don't like, we don't have any huge hardship. Our, our biggest concern was like the water going to, towards her house, to Matt's house, and then that particular bus stop, because in the, in the winter, when this is draining, that's all ice and the kids are out there waiting. It's always been, that's always like, one of the first things I actually notice, the first thing to worry about here.
So if anybody, if we were to walk this, this wet path, where would this end up? If we walked up the source, where would we go?
Oh, we'd end up drinking into the ground, we'd see groundwater.
Yes, thank you, Matt. If you don't have boots on, I don't. All right, where we're there kind of standing, this was all rose bushes. They had let it go because maybe the water table, I'm not sure, but they had let it go. But they also let it go because they were pissed with the condo association because they weren't told, the previous owners were pissed with the condo association because they weren't told when they bought the house that the condo association was going in. So they were actually trying to create a natural buffer, is our theory, so they wouldn't have to look at, because you can see the houses, you know, in the winter, you can see the houses. So it could be two reasons why they let it go natural, but we have dogs, you put them out, they're good chicks in the yard, so we have a clue.
Do you think it's easier to get to the pond from the road?
Do you think it's easier to get to the road?
Well, I don't.
That's okay.
Not that it matters because it's dry here.
I was going to say, it's irrelevant that it's clogged because there's no water here anyway. Probably because this thing is. It's the pond up. Pool up. You're not going to stop water.
So someone said that they put a lot of backfill up to the, to the west side of the pond to stop it from coming this way.
And there was a board here for quite a long time.
Even back to the builders' time.
But I mean, so.
The plan should show.
Well, clearly.
From here through here to over there. That's 100%. Well, it doesn't get very far either.
No, but then between here and like, what is it, Arbor?
No, no, I'm not talking about here, I'm talking about like that. Year after year, the leap. Like it just got hedged to that house. Let's just say it was working.
So, but this is technically a wetland now. It's constructed wetland rather than a drain.
Is there any type of drainage to, flowing that way out of the pond or is everything goes this way?
There was no design, you know, any other way but that one.
So Cortland Circle?
Natural, just a natural topography. Always just this way? It's going, it's going to Flat Hill?
It is now.
But I'm saying before, based on, you know.
Matt, your history out here.
Yeah, no.
Did it ever flow anywhere but this way?
No.
Downhill, this way?
And, and we've got the redevelopment drainage plan that shows the two areas, there's seven catchment areas on it, and the two of them, one and seven, drain towards Flat Hill and they're primarily the existing residents that weren't part of this development. And as far as I know, well, Cortland Circle wraps around this pond and there's only, as far as I know, the culvert that we just saw, the outlet, under the road.
But that doesn't even make sense, Matt, because there's the drainage on the other side of that road, we, there's no place for it to drain to. So it looks like it was just stuck there.
That's what I said, that's what I just said.
Yeah.
Even if the culvert, even if this is working, it's just going to go right in front of that property.
And this is going to fill up the people, like there's, John and I just walked it, there's no drainage on the other side of the road.
So maybe this is a good point for Todd to step in, because this is the Drumland and this is the northeast direction and where the good, well-sorted finds.
Well, what, what we do know is the swamp is to the west. Swamps are natural.
Swamps are natural sponge, sponges, so if a lot of the water historically had been directed that way, that's, that was taking probably most of the water. So any flow from the, uh, other ends of the pond was probably much less in volume. Now, what we have is, we have a, a natural drainage, or the drainage way where it was intended to flow is blocked. So the water has to find another way, and the way has been downhill towards Flat Hill Road. And it's going between where they've developed the properties. It's concentrating, uh, and what we saw is it concentrates right, you know, down in that, that, uh, uh, greenway between the residents and goes to the road.
And where we see it come, right at the edge of your property, onto the road, where we saw that river come out onto the road, that's where it starts and that, that's where it flies downhill after that on Big Runoff?
No, no, um, you're talking about Rose's property.
Yeah. No, no, I know that.
Okay.
Hell, I'm saying at her, at Rose's property.
It must, like, from here, it just goes downhill. I mean, this is the high point. We're the lower point, and it's just gonna go.
But I'm saying yours is the, yours is the uppermost point. It stopped, like, that's where it enters the road, and then it goes.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, yeah, yes.
Can we see that up here? Can we see the water physically going that way up on this?
There's two culverts that no, that none of this discussion is discussed, because it only drains into our woods. There's two under-road culverts on Flat Hill.
Yeah, but I'm saying, from this pond here, we saw it flowing out onto Flat Hill by the septic system. Can we see up at this?
Yes, north of that, there's two under-the-road culverts that are flowing.
I'm saying here, if I want to keep walking along the pond.
Well, let's, let's walk along. I don't know.
Yep.
Would that be a good time to tell you that it's also going in the other wrong direction and causing problems over on Elmwood?
Uh, uh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to her on Flat Hill right now. A lot of these houses, the backyards, that used to burn up or something, maybe this was a lucky area in town before. Then once they cleaned the lots, it opened up. It opened up a drainage way to let it free flow there.
Matt, is there a treatment plant up here, or just a large septic system?
There's, uh, the treatment plant, and they have a soil testing system.
Down in the fine sands and well-sorted materials that's deep and drained on the northwestly side of the Drumland.
And that's where that plant's discharging into?
Yes. That's the only place that the plan, the record plan, to have any indication of soil testing, because it was a very favorable outcome.
How far away is that plant?
You can access it by the road. We can take a drive down to it.
Is it going the other direction?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Well, the fact that that pond is at the top of the hill almost, just tells you that water surface elevation, it's not collecting water from the big area. It seems like it's all groundwater. So that's the groundwater elevation out here. So I'd be curious to see the elevation of that pond, that surface water versus the elevation here. That could just be now, the groundwater's risen over the years, and, and groundwater elevation right now is so much higher in this location. I was hoping to see a direct connection between that pond overflowing and flowing this way. Clearly, there's not. There's, there's some topography between us and here, or the pond and us here. There was basically no wet spots until we just got to the other side of this wall. So hydraulically, I don't see any connection. And the stone wall, I'm assuming, has been here for.
Yeah.
Forever, when it was a farm. So it's not like the builders raised the grades. You see the mature trees here. So I really do think elevation-wise, this is groundwater. It's just much higher, and it's, it's found its way. You know, that's why, I'd, I'd be really curious to take these plans, if I can take and make a copy and bring them back to you.
Adam says he's got electronic copies available.
Okay, good. Now, as long as I get the plans, now I know where we're at. I've seen the lay of the land. I'm assuming these retaining walls are gonna be on the plan as property lines.
Should be.
So I can really see my, I'll be able to visualize existing conditions versus proposed conditions. I'll review the drainage areas that divides where it used to go in the nineties, based on their drainage analysis. And then really, just, just, all I can do is make a determination of, back then when it was designed, pre versus post, how it was mitigated, where it was designed to go, and see if that met the regulations, because ninety-six, I believe, was, was really when, you know, the Wildlife Protection Act, the River Protection Act, they all came into effect. The DEP regulations, so this, this had to have been mitigated according to the rules and regs. So we'll see. Without reviewing it, I'm not gonna.
The other thing that I'm curious about is, I think we should review the precipitation data over this period.
Yes.
Just to see what our annual precipitation has been, because just anecdotally, everything I understand is the northeast is seeing increased precipitation over the last thirty years.
Yeah.
Just that increase in precipitation over the years could exacerbate something that was a minor problem, maybe initially, that over time may have increased to what we have today. Or at least contributed to it.
All the towns are requiring us to use the, um, it's called the Atlas fourteen, extreme precipitation data now. So the hundred-year rainfall event right now is almost nine inches, where ever since, you know, I started as an engineer, it was around six inches. So we're two to three inches of rain more just for a hundred-year storm. The lower, smaller events are a little bit, you know, they're, an inch or so are a little bit less than that, so. It has increased. You know, there's no, there's no denying it. So it's a lot worse now than it used to be. Uh, but.
But the increase didn't all happen in two thousand.
It didn't. You're right. That's what I'm saying. That's why I, I just, why I need to see the plans to really understand, topography-wise and drainage boundary-wise, where were the divides? What did it do before nineteen ninety-six, and two thousand when it started getting constructed? And to see what we built today. I think this, 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 you can clearly see at the road, so it's absolutely a contributor. The detention basin, clearly a contributor. There's, as the basin sits now, the outlet structure is a, it's a riser pipe, but it has a low-flow orifice. So that water surface elevation is only a couple of inches below the inlet pipe coming from the subdivision. So there is more volume in the pond, but if you block that outlet, the water level will rise, you'll get more storage, but it's gonna back the whole system up into the street. So anything you do to change that outlet configuration right now, is just gonna make all your pipes on the ground be a standing pond of water. So what you see now is likely, again, groundwater elevation, because that pond always has water. Every time I've seen it, the water's been right about where it's at.
See, the pond, when I looked, the detention basin, when I looked at it yesterday, was about, I don't know, two to three inches below that, um, outlet. And, but yet, when you looked at the, at the head wall with that twenty-four, uh, inch pipe, there was a flow of water coming out, on, onto the road. So.
That I guarantee you is water.
Water, groundwater.
It's groundwater, or even the water surface elevation of that pipe. That pipe should be better than stone. It's water just falling underneath the pipe to the outlet. So when I was here on Thursday, water was flowing out, that outlet, the low-flow orifice in that riser pipe, the water was up to it and it was flowing out. So the water literally just flows out and sits there between Flat Hill and the pond. You know, whether it was a wetland before or not, it certainly looks like it now. It's always wet. The shoulder of the road is soaking wet. Across the street where the outlet is, you can see on the Allison side of the property, of the, of the roadway, there's tire rut marks and it's soaking wet. There's water on it over there. So I, it's, you know, it's clearly visible that it's just a, you know, standing water just sits there and has nowhere to go. So that's, that's why originally we looked at, let's culvert it. Put it in a pipe, put it on the ground, and get rid of it. But you have to look at the downstream effects if you do that. And that's why we wanted to put stormwater BNP's along the shoulders of the road to collect it, hold it, infiltrate it if we can, slow it down, and let it out slowly. But as I said, groundwater is so high that anything we do, as soon as you dig it and put it in, it's gonna fill up with groundwater, and it's, it's a wasted effort. It's just gonna exacerbate, you know. You, you're gonna get relief for the first storm event. And then as soon as it's full of water, the groundwater's gonna keep these things full, and it's just, it's not gonna do anything. You're gonna end up with roadside ponds all the way up and down Flat Hill. And I don't think that's gonna appease to anybody, and it's not gonna help the problem, and it's gonna cost a lot of money for the town to do it. So, so I, this, this is good. We got to see a lot. I have a much better understanding of, um, the situation. It's always, you know, one hour of your time is worth weeks of my time looking at the plan. So this is very helpful for me today to talk with everybody here. I've driven up and down Page Street multiple times. Thursday, I went down, I saw your driveway, I looked at the culverts. I didn't go on your property, but I stayed in Page Street.
You can come on my property.
Yeah. So I saw the situation down there. I understand your, your point about if we piped it all the way down the road to Beaver Brook, the bigger the impact, the bigger the water body downstream, the less of an impact you'd have, but it's still a increase. It's still exacerbating somebody else's problem downstream. So I still don't think, personally, in my professional opinion, piping it and dumping it in Beaver Brook is a viable solution either. Without having to install some sort of infiltration or detention structure, underground, at-grade pond or something upstream, so between here and, um, in Beaver Brook, so. You know, that, it's certainly something we could still consider. You know, if we, if we looked at more data for groundwater elevations, here, it's really high, along the shoulders, it was really high. Maybe on Page Street, underground, you know, if we find somewhere the groundwater is much lower, this is a potential we could put a system under the pavement. But I think that's the only way we're gonna be able to get rid of this water. If we put it somewhere else, is if we have some sort of storage BMP upstream somewhere. So, um, I think we're at a good point for me to take a look at these plans, take a look at the drainage analysis. There's no need, I think, for any survey right now. So, you know, I don't wanna say it's baby stuff, but we still need to do more investigation here, up here, and, and based on what was approved before, we can really start thinking about the appropriate fix for it there.
Oh, we do have, I mean, at the very, very least, we have the safety issue of the, the crumbling of the road and the icy conditions in the winter. We at least have to address that. We can't have ice across the whole street.
So the, the riprap you see along the shoulder, there, there's, there's no storage, there's no storage there. So I don't know if, if that was a, a hole they dumped riprap in, and then it just, the water fills in between it, and over the last twenty years, it's filled with sediment and everything else, and it's, there's no more capacity there, so.
The water never really went into that swale. It went between the swale and the road.
So it looks like it needs to be constructed properly to, to receive the water, which clearly it doesn't right now.
I suspect the riprap was just to reduce the erosion on the, you know, the, uh, gully along the side of the road there.
I don't need to say this, but I think it was just to keep the neighbors satisfied that something was being done. The other problem is, we've got two culverts down here that go into the north woods of three oh five, and then that culvert that dumps out by Allison's Field that causes all the flooding down in my, at my house.
Do you wear those other plating?
Yeah. I know the ones down below the pond, but not up here.
They're higher in the place. Like, from, if you look at our house from the front, on the right, there's also culverts that contribute to the water that's going down to the area.
It flows that way?
It, it flows down, but it also contributes probably eventually to the Page issue, because it's all going downhill.
Yeah.
And that's going across, um, Allison's wooded area.
And you're, you are both neighbors, right?
Yeah.
Okay. How far from where we parked is, are your homes?
I'm not good with this one. Half mile, quarter of a mile.
So I'll, I'll drive by on the way by?
I'm right, yeah. I'm across the street from where the orchard. Intersection of Page and Flat Hill is her.
Okay.
I think a good point to end up here is if we walk back to the cars, and we just look at that detention basin. Just look at the outlet. We can see the inlet coming in. It's, it's, you know, only inches higher than the standing water elevation right now. And then we can see the outlet and see the water coming out on the other side. There's really nowhere for the water to go between the basin and, and Flat Hill. I mean, it's not like it's a big watershed that used to receive water. It's not a big wetland. It's just, you know, it's twenty feet between the road and the lawn, and it just sits there. And that's, that's clearly what's flowing into the roadside culvert and over the Allison property, and down to Susan's property. Alright, so this is the inlet pipe from the subdivision. Uh, you can see it's clearly flowing. It hasn't rained since Thursday, so all this water is the intrusion of groundwater into the existing drainage pipes that are under the, the roadway. So this is clear evidence that the groundwater table has risen significantly, probably in the area from two thousand. Inwater is getting in through cracks in the pipes, through joints in the pipes, intrusion into the catch basins. So just the groundwater condition alone is filling this pond. And then the outlet structure is that corrugated metal pipe riser across the pond. There's a low-flow orifice down, basically right at the weed line, the water line, that is taking all this groundwater and letting it out to the street. So, again, this is evidence that the groundwater table has risen in the area. And, you know, it's, it's, as long as the water table's high, there's gonna be a constant flow here. That's, it's relieving the pressure underground, and it's allowing it to flow out to Flat Hill.
So I have a question. This is low. And here's why I say that. When my kids were growing up, we used to come down here, the water was much higher, and we would catch the polywogs that were swimming in here. If, wouldn't that have stayed fairly consistent? If the groundwater's adding to the issue, and that's what some of this is, wouldn't, wouldn't it have maintained a higher volume of water?
How long ago was that?
Uh.
Was this before this basin was resized?
It would have been in the last ten years. When was this resized? It was before ten years.
In two thousand and six, and also in two thousand and six, the outlet, um, was changed from a six-inch to a four-inch, and it was lowered.
Okay.
So the other configurations, what controls the elevation of this pond? So that structure over there was modified, that'll change a lot of stuff.
Why was that lowered and modified? I mean, it seems like it's just putting more water.
Exactly, that's exactly what it's doing.
Yeah. That seems to be like the opposite of what it should have been.
Yeah, it should have been raised.
Should have been hired.
Yeah.
Raised, hired.
And who approves that? They're just able to, to homeowners?
I mean, it should have been.
No, it was, it was done by the, uh, what Matt is.
The association? Was Jack Martin founded, didn't he?
No, well, he found it, but, but you, you can find, um, when, when they, when they did the enlargement, they also modified the outlet structure. And there's, there's, um, um, documentation by, by Ross about that.
So what happens, you do an existing conditions model that tells you how much flow in the pre-conditions used to flow to Flat Hill. And then when you design a pond, you model the pond out, discharge, the outflow, to mimic what it was in existing conditions. So if the pond was increased in size, you, you know, it gives you more volume, so you can lower the outlet to now mimic what was in existing conditions. So that's why it was changed, I'm assuming if calculations were done by Ross, that's what they based it on. From what I'm seeing here, if you raise the outlet back up, all it's gonna do is fill the pond up to this pipe elevation, the groundwater keeps coming in. You're gonna, for that, for the day it takes to fill that up to that elevation, it's gonna go right up to that outlet pipe. So you're gonna get relief for a day.
For the people who see that, say, there's a river coming down, what is, does this pond, retention pond, ever get dry, and what's the highest it gets to, generally? And does it ever get close to above the weed line, like at the burnt, like near the burn level?
Not, I mean, Matt, do you think it was like that at the very beginning?
Well, I mean, the top of that riser, the outlet structure, the top of that is the emergency overflow for the hundred-year storm. There's no, there's no overtop. But there is a riprap burn that's a little bit higher, but that was the original overflow for the hundred-year storm, and I've never seen it come anywhere near close to that.
Why don't we walk over to the burn on top of that outlet structure?
I, I have one more question about the drainage, all the calculations that are supporting evidence and whatnot. They're all for stormwater runoff, right? Nothing is taken into consideration for groundwater whatsoever?
Well, the basin should have been designed to maintain a separation of groundwater elevation. So if it was designed as a wet pond, then you'll have this, but it's likely it wasn't.
But I mean, all the contributing sources of water.
It's only runoff from.
Only runoff. Nothing to do with groundwater. Just wanted to make that clear.
And it has those subdrains too.
The pond has subdrains?
Yes.
So if the pond has subdrains, then it, it was designed as a dry pond.
Right.
Not, not this.
Not to pass through.
Yeah. And the, and the, the subdrains are meant to convey stormwater if the infiltrative capacity of the soil was diminished by sediment flowing in. If it clogs it up, and it doesn't drain, they wanna try to keep it dry, so this, like, so likely, this is a, this is a failed condition.
Not, not working, right, not working currently.
It's a failed condition based on, you know, multiple factors, probably sediment that came in here, might have choked it out, groundwater level rose, you know, all the above would cause this. And, uh, and then if it's not maintained, then you're gonna, you're gonna see this.
What exactly is done when they maintain?
So maintaining a basin is to ensure that the pond functions as designed. So for the life of the pond, it's supposed to, um, hold back flow, let it out slowly. Maintained means cleaning the bottom of the pond out, so that if it was an infiltration basin, the infiltration capacity of the soil that's underneath it stays, um, you know, it stays sand, it stays porous, it allows water. porous. It allows water to continually flow out of it. If you don't clean a basin bottom, it gets choked with silt and sediment and road salt and sands from winter, uh, operations. And then you, you, you end up having instead of a dry pond, a wet pond.
So do you have to periodically remove all this cat and night tails in order to?
Well, if it was a new pond, yes. It shouldn't have gotten this long.
No, but in existing, like you said, maintenance is part of the maintenance, removing all the natural growth?
Cause this, the roots choke it. Uh, the roots for these type of, um, invasive species, they choke the bottom of the pond. They're meant to hold water. They create this environment. They drop all the, the fines and stuff from the cattails. You know, there's seeds that choke the ground, the pond bottom. Um, you know, they're, they thrive in a wet environment. So they're, they're designed to create an environment that lets it thrive. Yeah. So the, the low flow orifice, it looks like a, you know, four inch, five inch hole cut out at the bottom. It's about an inch above the, the water elevation right now. So you can see from the other side, water is flowing. So it's, it's going, probably following the pipe and just running underneath the ground. So as long as there's water here and groundwater is as high, it's gonna continually flow. You see where it discharged, where it went to go. It's just ponds here and I believe the town put the culvert in just below, near that telephone pole that goes across to the Allison's property. So it takes that runoff, it conveys it across the street. Then they pipe it down the road and it just discharges right in front of, uh, Matt's field. And it just sits there until it stages up enough that it continues to flow past your driveway and-
And Susan's house pond is like that?
It's the next house down.
Why is private allowed to go onto public like this?
That's where it's building existing conditions. So it flowed this way. There's a break somewhere in here, a drainage divide that this is a natural drainage collection point. So it flowed toward Flat Hill in existing conditions. So as part of your stormwater design, you're allowed to discharge to the same location.
At the same rate?
At the same rate. Um, one of the problems is at the same rate, not the same volume. All towns don't have, some do now. They've changed it so that the volume of runoff, in addition to the peak flow of runoff, has to be controlled. Um, so-
Instantaneous rate or average rate?
The peak, the highest rate. Has to be mitigated to existing conditions. So if during the hundred year storm, five CFS cubic feet per second was draining this way, then in your proposed model, this piece, this outlet has to be designed so that it allows five cubic feet. But the problem with just peak flows is you, you're looking at what was a field. Um, it was modeled based on a field. So maybe there was five acre feet of runoff. An acre feet is basically what it sounds like. Runoff over an acre, uh, per foot, you know, of volume used to be allowed to come to Flat Hill. For proposed condition, you put driveways, houses, roads, that peak flow, the volume now is significantly increased because the grass, the trees, the infiltrated capacity of the soil is modeled differently. Um, so your volume increases. So the regulations allow you to discharge a much higher volume of water as long as you control the peak. So that's, that's the issue. What I'm saying is if we had somewhere downstream, we can create a volume. So upon somewhere to hold back that volume of water and let it out slow, then that's a solution. But it's just, there's no real estate available to do it. And right now, you know, based on all of our test bits, the groundwater elevation's so high that we feasibly can't fit enough smaller BNP's between here and there to make much of a difference.
What is the, in your tests, what, where was the groundwater around?
It was anywhere from twelve inches to eighteen inches below, below the ground surface along the whole shoulder of the road from here down to, to Page Street.
A reference on pastry along my driveway, the water just oozes out of the hill.
Yeah. Cause what?
It just oozes out of the hill.
So I, I could see, I don't know what's available for area up here. If, if this property, which I think on the plan is specifically for stormwater, you know, if the basin was able to be expanded in footprint, we know the groundwater is here. So going deeper is not an option. It's not gonna do anything. It's, it's providing a much broader, broader, bigger volume to hold back the water. But, you know, at this point, somebody else's property, it's, it costs money, it's-
So there's air to, you get some, some benefit from it.
That's what I'm saying.
Operation too.
Yeah, you do. And then modifying the outlet configuration. If we have a lot of volume to deal with above between the top and low and low, low flow, you could modify the outlet structure. This is what controls what's going on. So this thing could be, maybe to make it bigger, but that stays at the elevation. The pond is just gonna fill back up to this elevation with groundwater. And if you don't change the outlet, it's, it's gonna be the same. It's not gonna do anything.
In those events that you have a river coming down the street, does it, is it flowing out of this area or?
No.
I think you have, you have, this is, this is consistently flowing. Even in, even in the summer, what's out here is gonna be wet. Ours will dry up in the summer. When we get heavy rains in the summer, you'll see, not necessarily what you see today, but you can see wetness that contributes to it. But this is always wet. Like, you know-
But I mean, is this contributing to the river? I mean, I realize there's water here.
Yes.
This flows down the shoulder and there's a culvert.
When you leave there Tom, go down to, go, leave here and go down towards the intersection down here and you'll see all along Allison acres, there's, there's water. And you'll see it, you'll see a big, a stream of it and then it will end because I think it diverges another way. And then you'll see it again and you can bring it all the way down.
It splits and goes across the fields.
And then it gets to front of her house and it doesn't like to go anywhere else. So it just sits at her house.
And it ices in the winter.
Anybody have any other things before we wrap up here? I want to thank you all for coming and sharing all the information that obviously everybody brought. I mean, I think for me at least, I'll, I'll speak for myself, very enlightening about what the problem is and where potentially the problem is. And I think Brian got a great idea himself. If we can get those plans to him so he can copy them, that would be great. I think Matt, you had them?
I think Adam, Adam Bernie has an electronic-
Okay. Uh, well, I'll ask anybody else if they have anything in closing.
Well, I, I think it would behoove us to come out and see the outlet of this along the road because right now it is flowing. You can see it flowing towards Flat Hill. And then, and then I think it would benefit everybody to actually see that it is flowing at the surface along the road.
Yep.
Um, and then there's a outlet head wall halfway down the field. So- This is, this is a stone, a dirt floor stone foundation?
Yep. And then this is culverted straight down the shoulder.
Maybe that means it's a big problem.
We can call them. If you think things are tough here, you've got something done on an island. I, I challenge you.
It's a town.
So this used to just discharge the project here?
It didn't use to discharge.
Who, is this yours?
Put it in.
It's the whole point. It's never had flow.
You said when they put the culvert in originally, it just, it was just a culvert that discharged.
In sixty-eight when we bought it, there was a culvert here. There, they had a cesspool that drained into it. My folks complained the board of health in the seventies, they had discontinued the cesspool. There was no flow in this pipe.
That was uncovered.
This was an open culvert that was mostly buried, very much like the inlet, so the culvert going under Cortland Circle. It was just, it was just there. Now we had, we had one acre of, of garden here. We had a quarter, oh, half acre. Sorry. We had a quarter acre of vegetables and then another quarter acre of corn. And then when the plug, got plugged up, this surcharge, two or three inches over the, over the rim, went two or three hundred feet down. You can see the flow. I have a picture of it when we look at the plan. And that was in two thousand and six.